Okay, welcome to the Bronxville Planning Board meeting for September. Appreciate everyone coming. And we'll start tonight with the minutes from our July meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review? And if so, would someone like to move the minutes?
I move you approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, terrific. We have minutes. The only item on the agenda tonight is the same matter that we reviewed at that July meeting, which is 30 Duesenberry. And just wanted to mention that, you know, this has now gone through zoning board, and so we're aware of that, and we also appreciate the work that, I'm assuming your architect helped you do in terms of assessing the neighborhood and answering some of the questions we had at the last meeting. So is there someone here to speak on behalf of the applicant? If so, please step up to the mic and identify yourself.
John Pelikowski, one of the homeowners. Thanks again, members of board, for your time tonight. As requested, we have provided some additional neighborhood data to support our application. This supplemental analysis was also presented to the zoning board in July when they approved our variance requests related to building coverage and driveway width. So I know it's been a few months since we last met, so if it would be helpful, I could go through the rationale and key features of the project again, or if that's not necessary, we can just jump right into the data.
I guess the question would be, I believe you guys were both at the meeting, but Leslie wasn't, so it's up to you.
Very quick. Yeah, I will go through just sort of the main points and not all the drawings, but we can always refer to those as needed.
Thank you.
So just as a reminder, our primary goal with this project has been to make practical changes to our home that any family would want, to improve our home while limiting any negative impact to our neighbors or to the environment and matching the Dutch colonial style of our 100-year-old home. Our family has grown since we moved to Bronxville, and we feel that we have now reached a critical juncture where certain modifications are necessary. When we moved here, we were a family of three; we're now a family of five. We need to create a bedroom that our son can grow into instead of the 75-square-foot nursery he currently uses. We need to update the outdated and undersized kitchen and family room that lack both size and workspace for a five-person family. We need to increase the size of our garage and driveway to accommodate more than two cars, a limitation which has been particularly challenging when we have our out-of-town family visit. And the garage itself actually can't fit one car as it's currently set up. And we need to expand the storage capacity throughout the home, to name a few of the more pressing issues. And I could go into any more of these later in detail if you need. The back-facing addition will not be visible from the street, and the left-facing renovated garage will be shielded from our neighbors' view by existing and possibly additional evergreens. The interior ceiling heights will not change, and neither will the height of the roof. The exterior matches the Dutch colonial style of the original house. In addition, our use of geothermal heating and cooling will remove noisy AC units from the outside of the house, and new stormwater mitigation features, including potential use of permeable materials on our driveway and walkways, should improve the flooding situation on Duesenberry. So Emily's going to go through the data that was requested in a moment, but just as a preview of the numbers and kind of how they fit into the bigger picture for the proposed project, here are some key conclusions. Number one, building coverage calculated three different ways is in line with the neighborhood comps. Number two, there is still a large amount of remaining open space, which is in line with the neighborhood and well above the minimum required level. Number three, FAR is below the zoning limit, and the increase is in line with other recent renovations on our street. Number four, we have the full support of our neighbors. We have five neighbor letters now, and actually have had a few others that have approached us and offered to show their support. Number five, and I think this is important just as far as the sort of aesthetics, is by removing an addition that is not in keeping with the Dutch colonial style of the house and replacing it with one that is, we are improving the architectural consistency of our 100-year-old house while only adding square footage that will be put to everyday use. With that, I'd like to hand it off to Emily to go through the analysis.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for considering our application. As previously mentioned, we went to great lengths to limit the number of variances required for this renovation. But of course, with a project of this scale, it makes sense that we would trigger a review by the village, which is why we're here today. Specifically, I know that this board was concerned that the project proposed would not be in keeping with the neighborhood, and I hope that the data that I'm able to provide you with today will relieve some of those concerns. I'll go ahead and walk you through it. And if you don't mind, I think it might be helpful to save the questions after I'm able to go through, just because it might, I know it's a little bit tedious, but it will be, it'll make the most sense if I can go through it in a comprehensive way. So if you turn to the next page, Christina. This first bit of data we prepared applies to coverage. As was previously mentioned, the zoning board has already approved our application for a variance here, but I'm happy to provide a summary of what we found because I think it'll help to assuage some of the concerns of this board. What we're looking here in the map is 20 properties on the east end of Duesenberry Road plus four properties directly adjacent to the south on Ridgecroft. As you know, coverage as it's defined by the Village Code includes not only the building footprint, but also patios, decks, swing sets, walkways, pools, et cetera. It does not include driveways, although those are a factor when calculating open space. Determining this calculation is a labor-intensive process, and without direct access to the properties in person, it requires a certain amount of guesswork based on the aerial views of the properties. Therefore, we intentionally limited our analysis of this coverage in the section just to these 20 properties. On the next page, you can see in this chart, our property is in keeping with the neighborhood. The highlighted properties, sorry, the highlighted properties are over the current building coverage requirements, about 80% of them. Only four of the properties in this sample are in compliance with those requirements. The average coverage in this area is 27.1%. Currently, we are at 24.54%, and the proposed plan, we would come up to 29.98%. So still very much in the middle. The second chart here shows you the open space calculations. Despite the increase in footprint, our property maintains a significant amount of open space, and this was a very important factor for the zoning board in approving our coverage variance. As we mentioned at the last meeting, we are very well situated on our lot, and a site visit helps you to see just how much open space there is in the backyard. Hopefully, some of you were able to take us up on our invitation to come see the property. We have a large-level backyard with a significant amount of open usable space, which is pretty hard to find in Bronxville, and one of the reasons why we love this home. The current setback is 47 feet, or 43 and a half feet if you include the raised garden bed in the backyard. In the revised plan, it'll be 40 feet. So it's still a lot of open usable space in the backyard, which is where the majority of this renovation will be going. Again, as you'll see in this chart, we're in keeping with the neighborhood. The average open space is 64%. Currently, we are at 71.86%, and in the proposed plan, we would be at 64.64%, which is just slightly better than the average and well above the 55% required. On the next page, we went into driveway analysis. I'll skip over this because this really kind of applied to the variance we were looking for.
Mm-hmm.
You'll see down here, we go into a broader analysis in part two, which continues on to the next page. In the second section, we wanted to broaden the scope of the homes that we were looking at here. The reason for this is that we wanted to provide a broader analysis for the board than what we were able to put together above, given the limitations of coverage being so time-intensive and not having direct access to these properties to be able to measure swing sets and things like that. So you'll see here that we expanded the scope of the analysis to include all properties on Duesenberry Road and the properties that border our street. This is what I included in the map that I handed out earlier. As you can tell, there are a couple of properties here that are obvious outliers. These five properties are between 20,000 and 60,000 square feet, or roughly two to five times the size of the other properties. If you exclude these properties, the average lot size comes down to 12,000 square feet, and if you include them, it's about 14,000 and a half. But we didn't want to cherry pick; we wanted to just kind of provide some clean data. In this coverage section below, we used a tool on this mapping Westchester County website that allows you to view property lines, buildings, and driveways. It does not include decks, patios, pools, and the like, so it's not going to provide coverage as it's defined in the building code. But nonetheless, it's a useful source for comparing lot size to house coverage on a broader scale. This continues on to the next page where you can actually see the data. The average house in this sample covers 19.2% of the lot. Currently, we are at 16.2%, which is in the bottom third. And then the proposed plan, we would come up to 21.7%, only about 2.5% above the average. In addition, it's important to note that many of the coverage calculations here, were they actually compared to the true way of measuring coverage, are artificially low. Nearly every property in this sample has a patio or a deck or something like that, including ours. But there's several, particularly in the bottom third, that are artificially low. Six of them have pools and patio surrounds. One of them has two oversized patios plus a deck, and one of them has been renovated, and the new footprint is not reflected here. This is all just to say that the average coverage is actually a bit higher, and our property is probably lower by comparison than what this chart demonstrates. But this is a known limitation of using this tool versus manual. On the next page, you'll see that we ran another analysis using this tool to add in driveways. These are not typically factored into coverage. We included this here primarily because of the driveway variance that we were seeking, but it gives you another sense for how we fit in here. With the proposed plan, we would come in exactly at the average of 27.1%. Both of these analyses demonstrate the reasonableness of this project. We're very much in keeping with the neighborhood. You go to the next page. The third analysis we ran covered FAR. It should be noted that the proposed renovation of 30 Duesenberry Road is in compliance with the allowed FAR. The chart below here covers the same 48 properties that I included above and that are on the map that I gave out before. The average FAR is 26.74%, though, as you know, allowed FAR is a sliding scale, not a set percentage. You can see in the chart below that over 90% of the homes in this area are in compliance with FAR, including ours, both before and after the renovation. Houses that are noncompliant are highlighted. Currently, we are at 22.4%. The allowed FAR for our home is 35%, and the proposed FAR is 34.21%. I'm sure that I sound like a broken record here, but again, you'll see some of those outlier homes coming in at the lowest FAR. Right now, we're currently in the bottom third of this chart, and if you remove these properties, we sink even lower. The bottom line is, our house currently is slightly undersized for this neighborhood. An expansion is a reasonable ask, and it's one that any future homeowner might very well request if we did not. Going to the next page, and this is the final bit of analysis, you'll see here, the final part of analysis covers recent renovations in the neighborhood. To better understand how this renovation compares to others in our neighborhood, we decided to look to recent renovation projects approved by the village to see if this increase in FAR made our project an outlier. It does not. You can see here several similar proposals approved by the village in recent years. 39 Duesenberry was approved for an addition in 2022 that included a 62% FAR increase. 15 Duesenberry was approved for an addition in 2021 that includes a 58% FAR increase. And 29 Ridgecroft, the house directly behind ours, was approved for an addition in 2021 that only increased the FAR by 8%, but they were already over the FAR limit at .34 of their .32 allowed, and this increase brought them up to an FAR of .38. You can see others on this list, including 3 Duesenberry and 12 Duesenberry with significant FAR increases, plus we've included additional variances that were required for these recent renovations in the neighborhood. The bottom line is, increases of this scale are not unprecedented in this neighborhood. In fact, they are very much supported. Not only have several of our neighbors completed similar projects, but many have expressed their support for this particular project. We have letters of support from 34 Duesenberry, 29 Ridgecroft, 26 Duesenberry, 27 Duesenberry, and 22 Duesenberry, and these are just our immediate neighbors. I'm confident we could get more if you wanted them. In fact, I was talking to another neighbor this morning who offered to write a letter. While we recognize that some of these projects were completed before this FAR increase trigger was put into place, we would argue that if you want to base a decision in this matter on a comparison to other homes in the neighborhood, then by extension, you have to consider how this project compares to other projects in the neighborhood as well. In summary, every way we calculate coverage, we are in line with the neighborhood. FAR is below the zoning limit, and the increase in FAR is in line with other recent renovations. There is still a significant amount of open space, well above the minimum requirement, and we have the full support of our neighbors. And finally, we discussed this in much greater length in the last meeting, but I think it's important to point out, we are improving the architectural consistency of the house and only adding square footage that will be put to regular use and that any future homeowner would likely desire in a home in Bronxville. We love our home and we love our neighborhood, and we hope that this board will approve our application so that we can make changes required for us to be able to stay here. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, I'm sure several people may have questions. Is there someone who'd like to go first? I know I'll have some, but let's make it open. Anyone else have questions?
Sorry, a few of my questions are the rehashing from the last meeting, just to jog my memory. On the expansion, how many feet is it to the side and how many feet to the back?
Yes, so the expansion is five feet to the left, so we're going from a 20-foot setback to 15 setback with 34 Duesenberry. Yeah, that's the image of it. And then in the back, actually from behind the house, behind the existing addition, we have a raised garden bed. So actually beyond the raised garden bed, it's only about 3 and 1/2 feet back. From the house, it's maybe closer to seven feet back, but if you include, you know, from the coverage perspective, it's about 3 and 1/2. There we go. That's it, yep.
That's actually right there.
If you scroll down just a little bit, and there's the image there. So you can see in kind of the upper right, there's the expansion to the left of five feet.
Would you mind, since you don't have the laser pointer, pointing it out for us just so we don't get it wrong?
So that's the expansion to the left.
Yep.
Five feet. And then here's the existing, here's the existing raised garden bed. So that, this is about 3 and 1/2 feet. That's maybe six feet. And then to the setback with Ridgecroft here, it's going to be about 40 feet.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mike?
Um, no, no.
Leslie, before I...
Yes, I think, you know, the fundamental reason you're here, and I think you did a good job of covering it in your presentation, is there's a roughly 50% I think increase in FAR, and once you cross 30%, that's why you come here. And I think we look at things a little differently than zoning. I think that's why the trustees had asked us to, you know, take this on, because I think what they had seen around Bronxville was a number of projects taking place that they felt were changing, you know, the character of the neighborhood and making everything feel a little bit more crowded, but in ways that might not trigger zoning review. And I think those percentage changes were why these things were coming to us. And I think it's worth noting that, you know, first of all, when design review, I think you guys met with design review at the beginning of this process, looked at this, I think they were a little concerned about the overall volume. I think in our last meeting, we expressed some concerns, at least some of us, about the overall volume. And when you look in particular at your FAR analysis, because the building coverage, you know, there's a lot of room on, it's the FAR because a lot of this is on the second floor that really, you know, is meaningful, and that's why you're here. You go from, I think, one of the sort of the least dense houses in the neighborhood in terms of volume to one of the more dense houses in terms of FAR. And so I think it's that volume change that, you know, causes us to at least stop and think about this, and I just wanted to give you a chance to speak about that.
Yeah, I think that that's a perfectly reasonable point, and I would agree with you. I think that it makes sense for projects of this scale to trigger a review. I think that makes complete sense, and I can see how that would be slipping through in other cases. I think my feeling, our feeling, is that while you have to have multiple ways to look at these things, you also have to, you cannot view these measures in a vacuum, that you have to look to, yes, is there an increase in FAR? You know, where is this property going to sit in comparison to its neighbors? But at the same time, that there is a reason why we have all these different measures, right? And when you look at how much open space we have on the property, how much room, you know, how we're going to have still a 40-foot setback, I think that it becomes a situation where to look at just one number would be doing an injustice to this project. I think that our house is undersized for the neighborhood. It is certainly undersized for a family of our size. And I think that pretty much anyone who comes to move into this house is going to want to make an expansion. And when you go and you stand in that backyard, you can see the space where it's logical to go. And so that's why we put together this project. You know, we looked at it all different ways, and this is the one that made the most sense to us, that could tick the various boxes, making a real-sized fourth bedroom upstairs, making, you know, a significant master suite, making it so that we had a mudroom and we did no longer had an undersized kitchen. Things that I think are reasonable, you know, being able to fit one car in our garage, being able to access our garage from the house. I think these are all changes that somebody moving into this house would want to make. So while I understand what you're saying about not wanting this house to be too big for the lot, or too big for the neighborhood, or changing the character of the neighborhood, I would argue that you can't make that decision based on one number. Because I think that when you look at the big picture, and you know, our neighbors who have written letters, we have sent them the full plans. You know, it's not like we've just kind of given them a gist of it. We've sent them the full plans. They like the plans. They think that they fit with the character of the neighborhood. They're in support. And I think that speaks volumes.
Okay. Any other questions before we open up the public meeting? If not, let's open up the public meeting. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment? All right, given that we had...
I wanted to see what a practical...
Doesn't everyone? Christina, maybe you can...
I called it forward tomorrow. It's not working tonight. I think it doesn't... Christina. Good night, everybody. Good night.
Good night. I'm sure, I'm sure it is. It's a beautiful night. Have a good night. Wanted to give her a chance if she had something to say. So with that, I think we'll close the public meeting and open up a board discussion here. Who would like to discuss this?
You know, for me, I think one of the biggest questions we face as a planning board continues to be, what is the process by which the housing stock in Bronxville gets modernized over time? Because it is old. And I think in this application, you know, what we're trying, well, what we're trying to review is, how do we meet the modern needs of families? How do we maintain the design aesthetic of our village? And how do we work within the guidelines of the zoning code that we've been set forth? I think this application with respect to modernizing the home is focused on the garage, which is too small, and getting it to a reasonable size, getting it the right access, and having a driveway to support it. It's expanding a very small bedroom, 80-square-feet bedroom, into something that someone can live in for their family and updating, as everyone wants to, updating their kitchen. And so I understand the modernization portion of it. On the design aesthetic, I think it's actually a pretty decent improvement from what it was before. The back part of the house clearly was an addition that did not have that component. I think they've kept, done a good job in keeping with the Dutch colonial aspect and redoing that. And then the third question becomes fitting within the zoning code requirements. And I think what's been helpful is seeing the data here. You know, I think there was an, you know, I wanted to understand where the volume's coming from. I think a lot of it is into that second floor, right? It's, not all volume is the same. I think volume on the first floor that spreads out is one aspect that creates challenges from a drainage perspective. This is a second-floor piece because it's kind of three and a half feet to the back, five feet to the left. And so it's understanding where that volume is, that addition is relative to some of the other homes. And I think that's where the data on the comparatives become very helpful and insightful, that it is not an addition that pushes it outside of the norm. It pushes it into the middle, slightly higher, but I think in most cases, it's all within keeping with the neighborhood. And so, you know, that's my assessment.
Yeah, I think that's well put. I agree. The analysis of the neighborhood was very helpful because, you know, we're quite leery about moving beyond the limitations that we're supposed to enforce. And, you know, families grow, but that doesn't mean everybody has the right to balloon their houses out. But I think this is in keeping with the neighborhood. There's a lot of open space. It does go up, but as you point out, it goes up in a way that doesn't loom from the street level or over the neighbors. And given that it, you know, there's a lot of open space remaining, the FAR is still within the limits, the real issue was the building coverage, I guess. And I think that is not out of character for the neighborhood, for a lot of this size. I'm sort of struck by how many different lot sizes there are in the area. I mean, some of the ones we approved before on Duesenberry were like postage stamps. And at the end of Duesenberry, there's this gigantic house and lot, so it's a real mix. But I appreciate the help with our analysis, and I think I'm happy with it.
Leslie?
You know, tasteful, realistic, practical, and in keeping with your neighborhood and the houses around you.
Yeah, and I think the only thing I'd add is, it was a lot of work to pull together the data, but it was very important to us. We're not sitting here equipped with the comparatives in each neighborhood and really getting the context that we want. We know Bronxville, and we, you know, always take a peek at the property and what's around it. But, you know, without the data, we're guessing a little bit, and I think it's really helpful that you guys rolled up your sleeves and put together the data that we requested. I know it caused a little bit of delay for you, but I think that wasn't a good cause. So if there's no further discussion, would someone like to make a motion?
I move we approve the plans submitted for 30 Duesenberry. I move we approve the plans submitted for 30 Duesenberry.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, so our next meeting, Christina, is...
For...
Okay, so we'll look forward to seeing everyone then. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.